Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Chambers.
Here.
Ronald Brooks.
It's not on, online.
Todd Corrane.
Here.
Duarkesh Nalan.
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy.
Here.
I don't think you're on, online.
Ron, is that you on? Ronald Brooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board, Tuesday, April 12, 2022, now called order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended to June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. For the public to join via computer at the GoToMeeting.com backslash join backslash Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? If there are none, accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured by the recorder. Please rise and join us with a salute to the flag. The flag of the United States of America.
A delighted state of America.
For the nation of liberty, justice, and freedom. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name, provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted micro-sense. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Do we have a motion to open the Planning Board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It is a vote. First on your gems tonight is the aim there at 440 Washington Street. Is there anyone online or in the room that is representing this person?
What's that?
Are you representing the people applying?
No, I'm David. Yes, I'm on the microphone.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please go to the microphone and speak clearly. So you are subdividing that lot of Washington Street. And it's on the northeast side of the lot. Can I ask what the intent is?
What's, what was that?
They asked what the intent is for subdividing the lot.
Well, eventually, probably, you know, build on it. I'm not planning on anything right now. And the other thing is, is where the common drive goes through, you know, it separates that lot.
Right, if it was developed, you can't have them come in on a common drive.
What's that?
If you do develop that, you can't come into that lot on a common drive. It has to have its own curb opening in the town.
Um, in other words, when I did this way back when, the state gave me permission to use that as a common drive, because otherwise I had five entrances on Route 20, and I didn't want that. So we have, um...
When that time comes, we're gonna have to see something from the state, because in the town, there's no, there's no common drives.
Well, it's, it's a common drive right at the moment, because it's, um, two buildings are serviced by that one drive.
Actually, it's wide enough to make a road. It's 45 feet wide.
What's that?
It's wide enough to make it a private street.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know. I just...
Forty-five feet wide.
Yes, I know it's wide.
Yeah. So, and, uh, my only other question is, and I'm talking out of order, so I should ask the audience, but the little panhandle up the end, I don't understand the purpose of that.
I, okay, I didn't hear what you said.
The panhandle, it toward the top of the page off the lot?
The panhandle?
Yeah, that little tiny strip of land that comes from the lot going toward the top of the page.
Okay, going towards the top of the page, and that would just fall on the, basically fall on the curb that goes down, and that's why there's a small piece, and that small piece is at the bottom, not at the top, but on the plan, it shows it on the top.
Right, well, it's, it's going away from Route 20. It's paralleling the...
Yes, it is. It's going away from Route 20.
Paralleling the driveway.
Yes.
I just thought it'd be easier to run the property line to that corner and make that little piece part of the...
Otherwise, if I, if I did that, that little section there would still be part of the 440 property.
Yeah.
And then there'd be no way to access it because of the, the drive there.
It's only what? Only nine feet wide.
What's that?
It's only nine feet wide, you really couldn't do anything with that.
Right.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments or requests regarding this matter? Duarkesh, do you have any comments?
So, um, if, so based on this plot plan, um, if the property line is now moved into the, the driveway, the common driveway?
No, it's right on the curb of the common driveway. It don't, doesn't go into the driveway. It's along the curb.
Okay.
No other questions?
Anything else, Duarkesh?
No. I don't have any questions.
Steve?
So, um, the access and utility easement, that's a driveway currently?
What was that?
The access and utility easement, is that currently a driveway?
Part of it's in the driveway, part of it's in the, um, in other words, in that lot. It's right on the edge of the lot.
I'm not seeing the curb cut, so I just wanna make sure that...
It's not dry, it's dry as a plot plan.
Yeah. Um, I just wanna make sure, again, future use, we'll have to see a plan, whatever's proposed there.
Right, if you decided to develop lot number one, you have to come back before the Planning Board with a plan and all that stuff.
Yes, yes, um, that's, all I was trying to do is divide the lot now, and I understand there's quite a bit of other stuff that I have to do if I wanna develop that parcel.
No further questions, thank you.
Ron, do you have any questions?
Nope, other than those out here.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve this plan as presented?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Duarkesh?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Regan, aye. Ron?
Aye.
It is a vote. We're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fine.
Yep.
Wait, wait a minute. I understand, but should I know when? Now this will be a...
Let's go to the...
Yes. 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 Yeah. Yeah. What's that? Tom?
Are you a grandpa? It's been a while.
What's going on, Steve?
Yes, yep.
I got a coffee. I think it was like 10 o'clock.
Yep.
He gets what he's saying.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda tonight is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust, or dependent subdivision plan for two lot, single-family home development with site improvements, properly located at Claire Drive in Linda Ave. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote. Is there anyone here representing Robert Lemansky?
Steve Pyke, I'm representing Mr. Regan.
Good evening. So I've seen the plans, and I see the request for waivers, but it's been 10 years since this was approved?
That's correct.
Correct, so a lot of the stormwater regulations have changed, and, what's that? Quite a bit. And just taking a quick look at the plans, I mean, the way it looks right now in your, your plan, there isn't a catch basin in the cul-de-sac, it's gonna run down onto the town property, town road, no Claire Drive, and now the town is responsible for the drainage. So...
Have we just changed?
Yep.
Good evening again. My name is Steve Pyke, I'm Senior Project Manager with Burton Engineering, and I'm representing the applicant Robert Lemansky. If I may just address the previous question from the Chairman, Mr. Regan. You will notice on the storm drainage plan, Mr. Regan, that there is storm drainage at the cul-de-sac. It does discharge into an infiltration basin, and there is a high-level overflow that does indeed, on the large events, flow onto the town property. However, given the DEP policy with regard to cleaning the low-level storms, the two and the 10, it achieves the BMPs that are typically being exhibited in any newer application. So if you would like, I can certainly revise some of the drainage calculations, but in terms of the measurables of the site, those things are still achieved, even though it is a 10-year-old application.
I hear what you're saying, but it's been so long, I think it needs to go to peer review to make sure it does meet today's standards on every level, not just the drainage?
There are a few things, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring to your attention, just as an FYI, before we get to that part, is that okay?
Yep.
It has been brought to my attention that there is a service connection in Claire Drive that is actually a water service connection, and it's showing on the plans currently to extend into the cul-de-sac and terminate with a hydrant. Now, obviously, the size of that service main, which is two-inch, cannot obviously facilitate a hydrant, it doesn't have the pressure or the capacity to generate it. So I have distributed a memo to, I believe, the person at the end of the, I don't know if you've seen it or not.
No, I haven't seen it.
It's dated April 12, and...
Today.
My apologies for the lateness, but I just found out this piece of information that it would preclude us from trying to extend that main into the cul-de-sac and actually have a hydrant at the end of it, because it's just a water service line, a two-inch line. So we would be willing to do this as an alternative measure, which is to remove the proposed eight-inch line and have a private well on lot number two in its place, instead of, you know, asking for a hydrant. Obviously, it's up to the discretion of the Board whether we have a hydrant or not, but it would be, we would be unable to support the hydrant, given the, the existing line. And the waivers we would be asking for, Mr. Chairman, is in Section 4821 and Section 4822 of the subdivision control bylaws.
First question, probably the first question from the town engineer is gonna be, where's the next nearest hydra? If it's over 500 feet, you have to put a hydra.
I believe the subdivision says 3,000. If you have any kind of water service at all, you have to extend it, but obviously, in this circumstance, you know, it would be an encumbrance on the project if we were to extend that line.
It may encumber some, but if that's what's required, that's what's required. But you'd standard, rule of thumb is standard, when you put a water main, it's a hydrant every 500 feet.
It's a true statement, but we are supporting two lots only, and I'm just, I'm wondering...
Do you know where the next nearest hydrant is?
I do not, but I can certainly find it out.
It'd be a good thing to find out. If it's less than 500 feet, you have a case, if it's more than 500 feet, I don't think you have a case, you're gonna have to put a hydra.
I think...
I know it's only two houses, but if you were in one of the houses and it was burning, and they gotta run a fire hose a thousandth feet...
Excuse me, I think it's all supposition at this point, because we really don't know where the nearest hydrant is right now.
I'm giving you a supposed...
Of course.
...epithetical.
Thank you.
So, I mean, if it's a thousand feet away, or 700 feet away, or whatever it is over 500 feet, it's that much longer for the fire department to hook up and put the fire out. It also raises the fire insurance on the homes. If you're not within 500 feet of a hydra, your fire insurance goes up.
Understood.
So I think this needs to go through a peer review, and be, and if they want recalculations on the drainage, and the, um, drainage basin, the cell basin, up to the right, and if they require the six or eight-inch water main to get the street to service the houses, I mean, if it's a two-inch water main now, I don't, I don't know it's servicing the other two houses where Mary Goff and George Yell own the property, and that's a lot south in the cul-de-sac. And the other thing we didn't understand is, why do you have a driveway off of Linda Ave, when you got four driveways off of Claire Drive?
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulties hearing you, you're talking through the plan.
Okay. We don't understand why, I'm also, you have a driveway into Linda Ave, instead of having both driveways coming off the cul-de-sac.
Well, I mean, certainly you look at the relationship, well...
You look at the relationship with where the houses are laid out.
I think it would be a little bit dubious to extend a driveway from the cul-de-sac to lot one. I mean, there's an extreme grade there, and we actually, I believe there, there is a bylaw that we have to maintain a certain slope going from the traveled way. In this case, given the two alternatives, from Linda Ave or from Claire Drive, I'm sure that Linda Ave is the preferred route, wouldn't you agree?
I don't know, if you look at the grading, grading plan for that.
I mean, that's a three, three to four on one slope there, and just putting it, mounting a driveway up that slope, it would be a little bit, I think, dubious, but that's just my opinion.
I'm sorry, if you located the house toward, closer to the cul-de-sac, you could save a fucking lot of money.
I agree.
Nothing's built.
Well, as an alternative, if, if you wanted to rule on this, what we could do is just extend the driveway to lot one from the end of Claire Drive and not put a cul-de-sac at all. Wouldn't meet the safety requirement, of course, but, I mean, you could rule on it.
Yeah, I can't rule on that, because town engineer's gonna want a cul-de-sac, they're not gonna want a dead-end street.
Understood.
I guarantee you that. That's a big, a big hangup at the town. So I'm still at the juncture, and I'll ask the rest of the Board how they feel, but I feel this needs to go off a peer review, and if any new calculations need to be done, I don't feel comfortable granting any of the waivers that you applied for. I mean, we gotta start up and scratch, we have a pretty good plan here, but...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you don't feel comfortable granting a sidewalk waiver where there are no currently sidewalks on either Linda or Claire Ave? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm talking about the other waivers.
Oh, I see.
Could you be more specific?
Well, we can run this two ways. I can sit here and pick apart your plan all night, and you can sit here and pick apart my, whether or not I feel comfortable doing a waiver. It's where you wanna go, because I'm ready to go.
Well, it's been approved under a previous application all the way...
Many years ago. Times change, rules change.
We asked for a plan and profile change from 40 and 4 to 30 and 4. Do you think that'll change in peer review?
I don't know. It's up to the peer review, that's why we paying.
Underground utilities?
That may change, you already mentioned the underground utility, the one in service.
Street lighting?
You may not need street lighting.
And that's why we're asking?
I'm not the town engineer, I don't want a peer reviewer to look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm not comfortable without a peer review, making a decision on that, or granting the sidewalk waiver, I think we have to start somewhere, and if the sidewalks, you know, future, we're gonna be looking at the sidewalks, so I wouldn't be amenable to a waiver for that.
So I, too, would like a peer review, I'd also like it, one of the things that I'd like to look at is an auto-turn analysis in terms of fire apparatus getting in and around that circle and back out. I do want the answer on the hydrant, the nearest hydrant, where it's located, I agree on the peer review, also Auburn Water and Sewer, city engineer, town engineer, and similar to Steve, as you know, I'm not in favor of sidewalk waivers, the complete trees policy, and I think we need to start somewhere, we need to start building out a walkable town and a bikeable town, and every chance we get, we should be putting these in now.
Duarkesh?
I support the peer review effort. I had one, I had one, like, maybe a couple of questions. One was, John, to your point, um, is there a preference from an emergency vehicle standpoint for a cul-de-sac rather than a dead-end street?
Cul-de-sac's definitely preferred.
Is that because of that?
It's easy to get in and out of.
Okay. The, um, the other thing is, because it's abutting the, the Pike, is there any additional requirements there that we need to think about?
Um, I have to check to make sure, but there's maybe some requirements.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions, is there any requirements that Pike or Mass DOT has in terms of setbacks from their, their right-of-way clearance, those types of things? It might be no, but it's just, we need something from Mass DOT saying no.
If we, excuse me, if we were to new, the Massachusetts, it's kind of like, well, the town may have a fence, but we're not new.
Correct, we're not new, we're office, so whatever they do in Newton doesn't matter. I don't care what they do in Newton, they got a ton of money. We know. Ron, do you have any comments? You still there?
I think so.
No, I'm all set, goodnight.
You're all set? Any public comment on this? Please approach the mic over there and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Mary Goff. I live on one Claire Drive. I've been there for 41 and a half years. My major concern is the Mass Pike is loud enough as it is from where I live, I'm very concerned about the noise level, and also losing the woods. Even though a lot of trees have fallen down over the years, we still do have woods there. So I'm concerned about all that. I'm concerned about our neighborhood, um, this is my neighbor that lives at, we're both butters. This is Leila Crop, she lives at the end of Linda Ave, I'm at the end of Claire Drive. We're the actual butters. So we're very concerned about environmental impact and especially the noise level, and nothing is really addressed about that.
I understand your, your, your position as far as environmental impacts, and that noise is also one of environmental impact, that's why we want this to go to a peer review, and if they recommend that they have to do certain things, but if they, if they need everything that's required by the town, I really don't have a way to say, no, you can't build a house there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, for the most part, you do a good job on the plans and stuff, you just stay up to update it, but that's gonna require a peer review.
Okay.
I know where you're coming from.
Can I just ask the engineer, so is this...
This is one home here? Is that, is that what it is? And where is the other?
No.
Does, the circles, so there's two homes in that circle?
There's one on the right, and there's one in the left circle.
Adam, can you change the plan?
So they're mainly behind Claire Drive?
Okay.
That's what I had to say.
Good evening, I'm Marilla Crop, I, I live at 26 Linda Ave, so we're, Mary and I are back-to-back with each other, so this property, this construction will definitely impact us the most, but I also feel that it will impact the entire neighborhood, the flow and everything. Our area there, this doesn't do it justice, there's, this is like measuring things to the minute, but it's very small. My house is the closest to the Pike, and even taking those, the natural tree barriers and the underbrush, I, I haven't heard any... I, I haven't heard any, uh, you know, any kind of remediation of how that's going to work. And as the party that's concerned, thank you for asking that question earlier. Where is Mass Pike into this? We are called, we are sent a letter, but did Mass Pike get notified to also, because they are the other neighboring property? And I did reach out to them, uh, a few years ago because the noise is increasing and the trees with all the, the, everything that has happened in that area, it's poorly taken care of right now. I have no confidence how this would be construction-wise, will be taken care of in the future, to be honest with you. Because gentlemen don't live there, we do. Um, so my concern is the undergrowth, the, the trees, that natural barrier that's going to be gone. If there was a hand-in-hand project with a Mass Pike, I know we don't live in Newton, but with our Massachusetts residents and we have the same rights under the law. So I don't think we should be looked down or made any effort, especially on the part of the people that are bringing this, to contact and to make those efforts known to, to Mass Pike. Because the barrier, the noise, if you actually put, our neighbors that have lived there, I've only been there fifteen years, but neighbors that have been there forty years like Mary, they have actually measured the noise before and the Mass Pike did come out and they said, well, you have a very good natural barrier. It's not noisy enough. Now that's gone down a lot. So if we run another test, well, they will find out that especially if all those trees are cut, like they plan on doing, then they're just like, we are open, like it's completely open right now. In the springtime, there's tons of leaves, so it's covered. You may hear noise, but you don't see it. But in the fall and in the winter, when everything comes down, you do see the Pike. And with everything gone, like I said, um, to me, that's a detriment to the neighborhood and a detriment to us. Um, the other thing that I'm concerned about is the proximity of the houses. It is such a small lot that two houses there next to each other, I don't know what, what that would look like compared to our houses. But in the cul-de-sac next to, to our houses, we are really far apart right now. All, the neighborhood was settled in nine, around nineteen fifty. So the way, it's an old neighborhood. I mean, we have, keep our houses, but the houses are old and they are settled. This new construction coming in, it would be like, you know, it, it's like a star in the middle of this, you know, like everything else is. So if they are, if the proximity, I, i- it concerns me. It concerns me how close they're going to be to us.
I understand your concerns, but the two lots do meet the town requirement for a minimum of ten thousand square feet subdivision.
Well.
I don't think, they can't put a, a house within ten feet of the property line, which judging by this, they're not going to anyway. They're going to keep it sort of in the middle a lot. And I didn't see any indication they were going to clear cut the lot. Now, the leaves on the trees only help you in the summer.
No, they actually help. They help quite a bit.
The leaves don't help you all the time if they're not on the tree.
Right. And this is why I'd already started that with Mass Pike to see if they can put a barrier up. I have sent an email to them. I want them to come and do some testing. As it is now.
Have you gotten a response?
Uh, not yet. No, I have not.
So, call your senator, call your state representative. Joe Citizen or Jane Citizen.
Yeah.
Write in a letter to DOT. Let's go into bottom of file. They don't care. But if you get ahold of your state representative, you may get somewhere. That's my advice to you.
Got you. Well, I appreciate that advice. Cause any, yeah, thank you. Um, but a few other things. So those are like major concerns. And I understand this is private property and there is, you know, obviously they can do whatever they all want with it and I understand that. Uh, but if it is approved, I, I would like to know like what's the construction timeframe? I work with COVID, both my husband and I work from home. So it's not just a living situation like where we are out for eight hours a day and come back. We are working there as well. So I would like to know, because it will impact our livelihood. Um, you know, what the construction will look like? Will they use explosives for the area? How that, how's the terrain going to be cleared out? It, it Linda Ave is a small street and if there's one truck, it's blocked. So like, all of that comes into play for me because it impacts my everyday. Can I get out? Can I come in whenever I need to in and out of my own home? Uh, my driveway is right on Linda Ave, so, um, and, and so, yeah. So those are my sort of concerns of, okay, if this is approved, what that will look like and how that impacts our, you know, living situations where we are right now.
I myself can't.
Thank you for listening to me. Appreciate it.
I myself can't tell you exactly what it's going to look like because I don't have any home elevations or stuff like that to look at, for you to look at. But, um, as far as work hours, the general work hours rely on town at seven to five, Monday through Friday, eight to noon on Saturday. No work on Sunday, no work on holidays.
No, thank you.
If they're going to build it, they're probably going in and clear the cul-de-sac first and load their equipment from there. From in and out of Claire Drive instead of Linda Ave. I don't know. It's up to them about the contractor.
And I don't know the exact measurement, but the hydrant, the fire hydrant you were talking about is at the very beginning of Claire Ave, where it meets with Melba Ave. That's the closest fire hydrant.
It's going to be close to five hundred feet by the time I said no.
Right there. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sure.
Microphone. You gotta, can you just use the microphone, please?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
A little rusty.
Okay.
Uh, Steve Beichel, bird engineering for the applicant. Um, there was some mention about environmental concerns here with regard to noise and, um, other natural features of the property. Uh, there are no BBW or no water resource areas, wetland resource areas on the site presently. So I don't believe it's really accurate to say that there are environmental issues with, with regard to the aquifer or with regard to BBW on the site. In terms of the noise requirement, if there is certainly a noise requirement uh, in the zoning or subdivision bylaws, we will certainly comply with it. Uh, but as we see it at this point, we don't see anything that references a noise requirement.
There's other, there's other environmental packs during construction, as we all know. There's dust. There'll be trucks coming out of the cul-de-sac. You're going to have to put a stone pad in. The trucks tracks, they don't track the mud down the road. That creates dust. You don't want to put calcium chloride on pavement because it'll make it sick as ice.
All of those things are part of our construction sequence that is in the drainage report. Um, with regard to Mass DOT in particular, we're not doing any or proposing any work within the state right-of-way. So we don't believe that there would be any kind of merit to go to Mass DOT with regard to this subdivision application. And in terms of addressing the timeframe, typically it's two, two homes. So it'd be no more than three months to construct the homes, but probably at least, I'm going to say between four to six months, uh, with construction of the cul-de-sac. Just in terms of answering those questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Can I ask why it wasn't constructed ten years ago when you had approval? Why wasn't it constructed ten years ago?
Christopher, Mr. Lemansky.
Microphone.
We're a hybrid meeting, so there's people listening online. That's why you have to use the microphone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Robert Lemansky, owner. Uh, the issues or the issue that we had back in two thousand thirteen were the market conditions that we weren't, they called it a recession. It was really a depression. When you think about home building between two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. So, um, the issue was if they, if we built it, that we didn't know if they were going to come. So that's why it wasn't done. And a lot of these questions or i- issues, if you look at the conditions of the approval back in two thousand thirteen, a lot of the, uh, the issues or at least the discussion items earlier this evening were discussed about tree cutting, about work hours and things like that. So, thank you.
Oh, I have a.
Any other questions?
All right. I assume these are market rate. You're looking to build and sell these. This isn't for personal use, correct?
Not for personal use. It would be for the market, yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Tom?
I don't know.
Yeah, I had a question.
Sure.
From the, uh, Robert, from the, uh, the construction sequencing standpoint, is the intent to build both these, uh, lots simultaneously?
Ideally, um, um, that would work. Uh, and what may happen just because of trying to look forward um, for what's going to happen in the marketplace with rising rates and the talk of a potential recession in two thousand twenty-three, that it would behoove us to get on this and get on it quickly. Again, while the market is still there, there are people out there who are looking for homes and they just can't find them.
Got a follow-up question there. So would, um, is there, I mean, in this case, we've been proposed, uh, the plan proposes two, two houses with two lots. Um, is there a potential for one, for say lot one to be eliminated and focus only on lot two or vice versa?
Um, I think, I think it would be, the focus would be both at the same time is the, I, obviously you get to get in there and, and clear some trees away. We were asked earlier, when I say earlier, back, uh, two thousand thirteen to just not strip all the, all, all, all the trees away that wherever we could is that, you know, we were asked that we would consult with the neighborhood to try to save whatever they felt was important to them. And we would, we would certainly do that to work with people. Um, and I would say that the, um, lot two, which is at the end of Linda Rav, uh, which again, I, I know I keep on going back to what was approved. Um, the planning board had put a stamp of approval of allowing that home to be, uh, to be entered from Linda Rav as far as the driveway goes, because it made the most, most common sense. But that probably would be the, um, first home that we would start construction on. Because the other lot, because of having to do the, the little detention pond, it's going to take a little more time, a little more work, a tighter area. So, uh, would be more difficult to work on. So that's why lot two first, lot one second.
Thank you.
You, anything else?
That will be. Ron, do you have any questions for Mr. Lemansky?
John, are you talking to me?
Yes. Do you have any questions for?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm fine.
Okay.
John, can I just have one question of Adam? Uh, what's the status of the fee? I'm trying to follow this email here where the, the.
They, they requested.
End-use clerk.
They requested a waiver of the twenty-five dollar penalty without the Mary.
So that's on the list of waivers they're also requesting?
Yeah.
How, how they consider?
And without getting into everything, how deep is that retention pond planning on being? I guess about.
The retention pond?
Yes.
With the slope, I, I don't, I don't think it's any more than five feet.
Five feet deep?
I'm, again, I, I, I don't have it on the tip of my tongue. I know it calls for us to put a fence around it.
I was going to say, I didn't quite see in the plan. I want to make sure that was part of it.
Yep.
IPD, they'll definitely get a fairly tight around a four feet high.
There's another one over there.
It's out of. What does that flow into? The plan doesn't really care how that far.
But it does have a, uh, a riprap pad with scout over it.
They see that, but w- once it gets through the emergency spillway at elevation five eighty-five, eighty. Um, is that going to flow, uh, to the south? Is it going to flow directly east?
A little window, please. So, um, I don't know if you can see this open in clarity, but, um, there, there, there's two, there's an area in which the, uh, flow from also the area of the cul-de-sac, which is pervious and impervious in the pavement area, which is gathered before it can go out into Claire Drive. And then it's, goes through a series of catch basins and manholes and then out and actually into the basin. Uh, the top of the basin, it looks like is like five eighty-nine and the bottom is like, uh, it's, I think that's a five. It's five eighty-five. And then, uh, there is a, you can just pan it over a little bit to the left so I could see this right here. A little more, please. Here, here, thank you, right there. Uh, there's also a, a discharge point here as well. It's fairly flat. It's about one percent. That flows out of the basin in this direction. Uh, there's an emergency spillway that's assembled here. Um, but typically the most of the flow on the high-level storms, that's ten and above, this basin will not hold any more than ten. Um, it, it typically goes out at five eighty-five. And there is a, a small amount of metering of the low-level storms, two and ten, that actually is discharged in that direction. And there are basically, those have very little erosive force, but uh, at the end, there's a flared end system there with a, a riprap pad that will take down any type of flows out of that pond for those two storms. Less than a half a CSF we're talking, that would actually be metered out to pre-development, uh, conditions. So, um, as, as part of the, the storm drainage design, we are, uh, actually encumbered to, um, demonstrate that, which we have in the previous drainage calculations. So, um, certainly in anything from twenty-five and above, um, the water's going to flow pretty much where it's going to flow. Everything's just going to be submerged and especially the basin and the cul-de-sac area. But it will definitely flow in this direction because, because as you can see, the site naturally flows in this direction, that the contours are kind of being pushed, uh, to the east.
Correct. But under existing conditions right now and nothing there, by putting the cul-de-sac in and paved, you increase the impervious area, which is going to increase the flow to the catch basin into the adjoining property.
Yeah, but what we're doing is we're metering it off. Okay, it sits in the base, excuse me, it sits in the basin and it, it goes to pre-development levels and then slowly we meter it off at that pre-development level. That's what the drainage calculations demonstrate.
So I understand where you're coming from. Like, that's another reason why I want a peer reviewer.
And that's what the peer reviewer will ex, will put, demonstrate in the letter as well.
That's why I want to hear from a peer reviewer. You have another question, Steve? Go ahead.
Uh, ten years ago, did you guys do soil samples on the site?
Yes. Yes, it is an infiltration basin and we couldn't design a basin like that if we didn't have those.
And, and that's why I'm asking because, uh, I don't think any of us were on the board ten years ago. So I'm not familiar and I don't know if they had YouTube to go back and watch it. So.
Yeah.
I'll, we'll probably ask a lot of questions that are the same.
No, it's all good. And, and that's what we want you to do. But at this point, if you feel that it merits a peer review, then that's what we'll do.
I believe it does and I'll ask the opinion of the rest of the board.
Yes, I agree. Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so let me call for a vote. Do we need to continue this?
Yeah.
Based on peer review results. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to continue this based on the peer review results.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Ron?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen. May I have a motion to open the hearing for amendment to section 3.9.1.4 and adding a new section 14 animals to the urban zoning bylaw?
Make a motion to open.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rod?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is an aye. The hearing is now open. What do you got for us?
So I recall this was, this presented to you last fall for a town meeting vote. Did not pass a town meeting last fall for various reasons. There have been some tweaks to language, they're, they're pretty minor tweaks, just adding, changing a couple of words here and there. So DAS is looking to bring us back to town meeting. So as part of that process, it needs to come to this board for a vote whether to recommend or not recommend the town meeting approval of the zoning change. Darlene Corals here from DAS, she helped work on this all of last year and the update this year. If you have any detailed questions, she's the answer. I can answer what I can. It's basically the same as last year, minus a few words.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions? That was only two of you. Anybody on the board have questions, Steve?
John?
Yeah, go ahead, Rod.
Did you ask for questions?
Yes, I did. You're up.
Okay, all right. Under 14.2, keeping of livestock. My question to Adam is, is the special permit required only for someone who has less than five acres of land?
I believe that's the case, I'm looking that up now. Darling, it was on.
If, if, John, I, it, it seems to be reverberating back on the video. But if it's, if the special permit is applicable only to those people that have less than five acres, but I'm, I'm all right. But if it, any of this is applicable to anyone who has 50 or 60 acres of land like I do, I am totally opposed.
The, the, to the, the special permit is for less than five acres for the operation of a pigery. So that's more of a commercial farm, not individual or a couple pigs. I don't think that would apply.
That would make Rod all set, he's all set.
Yeah, it's, it's more for like the keeping of swine or commercial raising of animals, something prohibited on less than five acres.
All right, so Adam, my question is, if I wanna, if I wanna go start raising sheep again or get some cows, do I have to go get a special permit to have them?
I don't think so, you have more than five acres.
Yes.
Yeah, it says less than five acres without first obtaining a special permit. So you have a lot more than five acres up there. So you should probably be all, all set. Although I will say right now, you wouldn't be able to have more than four animals as the zoning is. So this is partly why we want this passed, is to allow more, allow, have, have legally more allowance for different types of animals.
Rod, I think you have a couple more acres than five, right?
Yeah, I have about 55 or 60, but.
I think you're good.
If, if you're done, I'll ask if you're gonna?
You're breaking up, Rod, I love you.
And if, if this is something that has to be voted on tonight? Or can I have time to walk through it with Adam in person during the week?
Well, we're gonna take a vote tonight. I mean, you can abstain or, or vote no, that's, that's your prerogative. But I think you're all set with the amount of land you have. You don't need a special permit, you don't have less than five acres.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Steve, go ahead.
Special permit, is it a one-time special permit? Or is it an annual or how often do you need to?
One time.
I, I believe that the special permit is going to be for the applicant. So if you have less than five acres, we're requiring the special permit through zoning, zoning board of appeals. And then in addition to that, once they go through that process, then there's the process of, you know, if there's a permit from board of health or animal control. So we're just trying to put some checks and balances for letting people have these things legally. Right now, the way that the bylaw is written, there's not anything outlined in this. And for years, we have been dealing with situations or concerns that come to the town. And then we have to go out and without having something in place, you have to make determinations that are very difficult because we don't have a parameter of a bylaw. So the animal control officer has been, you know, in town for a good amount of time, you know, seven plus years. I've been in, in town and have also dealt with all sorts of animal concerns. So we've tried to put together a bylaw that reflects concerns, coming up with guidelines from the state, best practices. Those are all incorporated into what you have before you. A lot of thought has gone into it. It did go before town meeting in the fall. There was a lot of discussion, to say the least, about it. But we heard the concerns from town meeting. We took those back. We tried to modify and make some changes so that those wouldn't be trigger points for the bylaw. And obviously, we were here to answer questions. We also have the, the pre-town meeting that's scheduled for a week from tonight. So next Tuesday, we'll have, you know, the, the, anybody's open to come to that meeting and ask questions about how this, about anything in the bylaw and how that affects them.
So I know the board supported it last time. I think when it got to town meeting, there was some issues with how it was presented. But I think my memory serves me right. A lot of concern about being grandfathered in. How did that get addressed with this one?
So the grandfathering part is, is a challenge. Because where, where we may not know where all of animals are in town, we do have some records of where the, the town and the animal inspector has traditionally done inspections. So for example, if there is, there is livestock that somebody has identified to the town and received a permit for that, the animal inspector, who's also animal control officer, does a yearly inspection in accordance with what the state requires. So it's an annual inspection. We're aware of those places in town, but we're not aware if somebody has, if they have 50 chickens that we don't know about. So with that in mind, we're trying to come up with a, a structure where if we have somebody apply for a permit, that, that they can follow these rules. If by chance they cannot follow these rules, that's a conversation that we have to identify how we move forward with that. Because it doesn't help us to put the bylaw in place if there's exceptions to everything. So that becomes a challenge. Taking into consideration also concerns that come into the department, someplace that may have been inspected over the past 10 plus years that doesn't receive any concerns or complaints. You know, that is an overall picture to look at and take into consideration if they can't meet one piece of this bylaw, is there a reasonable way to kind of move forward and, and permit them? So that is, that's still being worked out, but that is what we're looking at. We do have a, a set of places in town that do have annual inspections that reflect some of the, the things in here. So we have livestock, we have chickens.
So is, is there expected to be a grace period where someone can, if they're not in compliance with this, they can apply? When I hear permits, I think fees. And I might be wrong, but is there a period, say of one year, should this go before and get approved, where they have one year to report or self-report this? Where they are, the opportunities afforded to get grandfathered in?
I think that's something we can definitely look at. Yes, we do have fees for permits. The, the fee is not the most important thing that we're looking at. We're trying to identify places where there are animals in town and especially animals that may potentially be a concern for disease. Making sure that inspections are done on those places. And that's why we want permits to be pulled for people that may have livestock or poultry, chickens, that sort of thing. It is something that we have talked about and we hope to be able to have, have some answers on that.
Okay. I don't know how it will go at town meeting, but certainly I'm bored to send it along. I don't know if it addresses all the concerns from last time, so I expect a lively debate.
Rod, you have any questions?
I do not.
Rakesh?
I don't have any questions.
I can see why you have to regulate this because the way the food prices are going, people are stuck going to the backyard left and right. It's gonna happen. We're not gonna tell anybody.
Yeah, it's already happening. Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's, it's a difficult situation just because right now, nothing is allowed. We're trying to make it so that with the bylaw, you can, you can have livestock and chickens and so forth. And we have some, you know, we have some parameters of how you have to keep them.
I agree, I agree. Rod, you all set?
Yeah, again, John, if it, if it only applies to those that have less than five acres.
Correct.
I'm all right with that.
Okay, that's what applies to anybody with under five acres.
I think it's important to keep in mind.
I, I just don't want to have to go get a permit if I think I'm gonna go get some sheep or cows or horses.
I want to see you up on a horse, Rod.
You can get draft horses.
I mean, I could just point out that as the, the bylaw reads right now, the keeping raising of dogs, cats, or other animals for the breeding of, or for the breeding of dogs and cats, no more than four such animals, more than one year old may be permitted, period. It's four, it doesn't say what kind, it doesn't say, you know, pets can be a relative word. You can call your chickens pets, you can call them livestock. But right now, four is it, it just opens a whole new world for a lot of people.
So as far as like pets, like dogs and stuff, the household kind of is identified as dogs, cats, ferrets, small road animals, birds that are kept indoors.
Yeah, that's already the new definition.
Yeah.
That's not currently allowed.
No other questions? May I have a motion to support this to town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rod?
Oppose.
Steve?
Oppose.
Rod?
In favor.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. What's that? May I have a motion to close the hearing on 3.9.1.4?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Rakesh?
Aye.
Rod? Steve?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is an aye. Rod?
Aye.
Next up on the agenda is amendments to the table of uses, section 3.2.2.3 apartments of the urban zoning bylaws. May I have a motion to open this hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All those in favor, Rod?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is a vote. So, what is with this, Adam?
So we're gonna be looking to postpone this indefinitely. We're not looking to carry this forward right now. Still gotta go to town meeting, but it was not postponed because the table of uses that was approved at town meeting last fall has yet to be approved by the attorney general. They asked for another 30 day extension last week. This change is kind of, it's off changes that were approved in the fall, so we can't make changes to something that hasn't been fully approved. So we're, I won't say what my feelings are, but we're gonna postpone it.
Can I have a motion to postpone?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rod?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, it is a vote.
Close the hearing too.
May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rod?
If we're postponing it, does that mean it's open or we're closing to have discussion further? Like it's coming off?
It, it won't be, yeah, it's coming up. We'll have to, we're gonna go forward with those changes in the, they say in the fall.
The three files, the whole thing.
Just wanted that clarification.
So Steve? 38?
Yes.
To myself, John Reagan, it is an aye. Rod, is that an aye from you?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next on the agenda is amendments to section 3.2.7.1.0, table of uses and description of uses, 3.3 temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana, 3.7 prohibited uses, and 9.3.1.3 registered marijuana dispensaries of the urban zoning bylaw. Adam, can you give us a rundown on this one, please?
Open hearing.
Oh, that's right. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rod?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Rod? Rakesh?
Aye.
I, myself, John Reagan, it is a vote. Hearing is now open.
So the board of selectmen are proposing these, these changes. One of the members of the board is here. If you have sort of questions, essentially, what they're looking to do is to expand the allowed areas that medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed in town and reduce some of the sub- that requirements though, as they kind of meet the, the state requirements instead of our own requirements.
So when you say expand the areas that they'd be allowed, what, what does that mean?
So currently, medical marijuana is only allowed in general industry district, which is around Millberry Street and like where, where is that, that area, Millberry Street? And headed towards Worcester on Southwood Street, on the left-hand side, on Sword Street side.
Route 30?
No.
Route 12 headed toward Oxford?
That's what, adding, this change would add, add. That's what adding, this change would add to those areas, albeit mostly highway business, local business districts, as well as the industrial park areas.
So is, are we looking for a moratorium to stop that change?
The moratorium is excess language. The moratorium is only a stop gap measure until a bylaw could be voted on, which a bylaw was voted on by the year after the moratorium went in place. So the moratorium is just excess language at this point.
So if there's a vote against keeping a moratorium, what does that do? Nothing. There's a vote to implement the moratorium, what does that do?
Nothing. The moratorium, there is no moratorium. It doesn't apply anymore. The moratorium was put in place in 2017 simply to prevent, without, without the moratorium, there would have been no control on dispensaries. The moratorium was put in place until the bylaw could be crafted, which was crafted 2018, I guess it was, before, yeah, 2018. So the moratorium as it is in the bylaw right now is just, it's meaningless. It's just language that was never removed.
It's no longer valid, that, that piece.
Sorry.
That piece is no longer valid, that piece of the...
The section nine, the temporary moratorium has only been to last around a year or so. Section 9313, 93130, and all the way down where it's not crossed off, that's all the marijuana bylaw.
So a vote on this in either way doesn't do anything?
So a vote on this would, it would remove the moratorium and expand where the medical marijuana dispensary is allowed.
If we remove the moratorium?
The moratorium is meaningless. You can just ignore the moratorium. What's being changed is the table of uses would allow medical marijuana in further districts. And it would reduce the setbacks from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. Changes some of the operating hours. It basically just allows medical dispensaries in other places in town. They're allowed right now. Medical dispensaries are allowed right now. Recreational is not. Recreational will not be exercised.
So this expands the area which they could set up shop if they choose?
Correct, medical only.
Medical. And they can do drive-throughs if they choose.
Justin, do you want to answer? Is that addressing this?
I believe it's aye. They're looking to remove the drive-through language.
Yeah. It's through the chair. So I can talk to, I guess, the board's intentions behind this and the actual details, Adam, I think would be better suited for it, for the effects. But yes, we removed the regulations preventing them from having drive-through services. The major thought behind that by the majority of the board was we wanted to treat it like a pharmacy in town because this is just, we're just talking medical marijuana. These are people that would come in for whatever prescription they need it for. And since we figured CVS, Walgreens can operate with a drive-through, so should these facilities. So yeah, we, we did take that out.
And they still require cycle improvement?
Oh, yeah.
Just making sure, so I know medical, it's a lot more difficult to be restrictive in that capacity because we can't say no to it. So anytime you open it up, you have to make sure that it's something that we're gonna, if it's proposed, we have to be ready to proceed.
Right. So say recreational marijuana was approved, would the drive-through be pulled? They would not be allowed, or no? I haven't seen a drive-through in any medical marijuana facility.
It's my understanding that if a, we were to legalize recreational marijuana, the town would need to adopt a new set of bylaws specific to recreational marijuana. But Adam, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's, that's my understanding of it.
So there is actually a drive-through, I'm not sure if it's medical or recreational in Framingham?
Nothing allowed here. I see what it allowed here. I see they're on every street corner except for Robert.
Yeah.
So... Intermittent proceed here.
So, medical marijuana, we're gonna remove the cultivation language? So they would be allowed to grow on-site if it's medical, is that?
Yes.
Provided they also get a license from the state cannabis.
Correct.
Yeah. Which has a whole nother set of regulations they have to meet in order to...
What about the recreational marijuana? Would they be allowed to grow on-site as well?
No, that's not approved.
Yeah, so this doesn't allow recreational marijuana. That would have to go back to the ballot.
Quite right.
Yeah.
This is, this is just for medical marijuana. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to section 3.2.7.1.0?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Steve?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, as an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Myself, as an aye. The hearing for the amendment to section 3.2.7.1.0 is now closed. Other business, nothing in the discussion, nothing in the modification. Decisions, Auburn School Department, 35 Swanson Road, I suppose you just wanna have that signed?
Yep, you already signed it.
Ron, it's not to get it signed?
No, Ron, you're all set. You're off, dog.
Okay, meeting minutes for 3/8/2022. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
I can't vote because I wasn't here. It is a vote. I don't see any new business ever seen by the chair. Give a little town plan update.
One thing was already mentioned, there's a pre-town meeting next week, Tuesday, the 19th at 6:00 PM. Been this room, the Board of Selectmen room, for anyone that would like to come and hear about the town meeting more and ask any questions. Also, we are still in the search for an alternate or associate member. Anybody that would like to learn more about it, feel free to call the town home. You'll know all about it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Maybe I'll motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron? Todd, you in favor?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Yep, aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. Our next meeting is April 26, 2022, at 7:00 AM.